I'd like to call the order, the regular meeting for June 25th, 2025. Roll call.
President Zipfel.
Here.
Vice President Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Andrus.
Here.
Commissioner Lestrako.
Here.
Commissioner Partha.
Here.
I'd like to ask our solicitor, John Iainosi, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight, since he is standing a little bit taller and happier.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. Well done. All right, is there a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Partha, second by Commissioner Lestrako. Any questions or comments about the agenda? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving tonight's agenda and moving ahead, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we can move ahead and with this agenda. All right, citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments on agenda items? Nope? All right, we're going to move to our consent items. Is there a motion to move into the record the consent items that are listed in the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Lestrako, second by Vice President Rogers. The consent items include the Board of Commissioners meeting minutes of May 14th and May 28th, the Treasurer's report for the month of May, the bills payable, paid bills in the amount of $1,186,892.16, and unpaid bills in the amount of $2,758,75.48. Also, the budget report for the month of May, the VMSC monthly report for the month of May, the North Penn Water Authority meeting minutes of April 22nd, the HTMA budget report for the month of April, the Colmar Fire Report for the month of May, and the HTMA meeting minutes for May 13th. With that, I will call the question. All in favor of moving those into the record, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, those are moved into the record. All right, well, we have a very special presentation, I think. Are we ready? Or do we need another minute or two?
I don't see Malachi.
Well, why don't we, why don't we give Malachi a minute or two to settle, right, when he comes in? And then why don't we go to Tessa Robinson, Communication Specialist with the Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board presentation. We're happy to have you. Thank you for coming out. Yes, please.
And Tessa, I have a handheld for you that you can advance your slides. Give me one second, and I'll pull it up, and then you can take it from there. Yeah, here, let me, here. So you can just advance it that way, okay? And then you should be good to go.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me and for taking the time. I'm Tessa, Comms Specialist for the Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board, the official destination marketing organization for Montgomery County. Tonight, I'm going to share a little bit about who we are, what we do, how we're already trying to support your businesses, and ways we can work together to promote your towns. So just to start, for those who are unaware, we are a private, nonprofit, member-based organization and the official destination marketing company for Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. We have more than 500 members representing our 80 hotels, 1,600 restaurants, and Motco Makers, 50 golf courses, 100-plus miles of trails, attractions, 200 arts and culture venues, and some of the best shopping in the county, or in the country. So if you're curious as to why we use the Valley Forge name instead of Montgomery County, there are 18 Montgomery Counties across the U.S. So we do have a sales team, and we have people on our team that travel both nationally and internationally. And to be recognized, we like to go by the Valley Forge name, so that we're not confused with the other 17 Montgomery Counties. We also have Valley Forge National Park in our backyard, which is huge, it's very recognizable. And when we travel to other cities, people know where we're coming from, and they know that we're outside of Philadelphia. We do our best to promote all of Montgomery County, not just Valley Forge and the King of Prussia area, which is why we're here tonight. And then you can see our mission and our vision statement up here. We are inspiring the world to fall in love with Montgomery County, and we are trying to create a must-experience destination rooted in the past and leading the future. We are funded by the hotel tax, so overall, our main goal is to get people to stay over in the county. That then gives us the revenue to pour back into the county to get more people to come, so it's kind of like a cyclical nature. There we go. So why tourism is important to our county and to all of us. We have, we see $2.4 billion in total economic impact for tourism in Montgomery County per year. That contributes $1.7 billion in annual total tourism spend, and creates about 40,000 jobs in our county for the people that live here. So obviously, it's a very important industry that we need to help grow and help bring people here. Our organization is split into two sides, pretty much, the sales team and the marketing side. I'm on the marketing side. We have tons of opportunities and stuff on our team that we like to help the county with, so we have a full PR team. We have social media, digital opportunities. We do co-op, which is like advertising and billboards. We have a full in-house creative team, and we also have our mascot, Monty the Fox, that helps us market the county and the businesses that live here. That's just an example of some of the material that we create and use on our socials, on our website, to help promote. That was specifically for Motco Makers, which are our breweries, distilleries, and wineries in Montgomery County. But we do all kinds of stuff like that to help promote. When it comes to membership, our organization has over 500 members, all of which are businesses in and around Montgomery County. Member benefits include access to member directories, networking events, our HQ portal and our website, social media, our PR team, discounted advertisements and marketing, sales leads, business referrals, and much more. As you can see, we have a couple Hatfield members that are up there, but we're always trying to get more. And then when it comes to our digital and print guides, I pass them out for you all to view. We have three digital and print guides that we work on every year. We refresh the content and publish them every year. Our Creve guide and our Visitors' guide is in front of you, and then the Arts Guide is actually from last year, but we are in the process of rewriting that and publishing that for this fall. And we're also working on a 2026 Visitors' Guide, which is going to be really exciting. It's going to be in-depth, and it's going to have a commemorative cover, so that people can actually, like, frame it and keep it for a long time after 2026. Our website is probably our most viewed piece of material that we have to offer. We see 2 million annual page views to our website. It's all things to do, places to stay, places to eat, so we come up on Google when you search things to do in Hatfield, things to do in Lansdale, and a lot of our restaurant pages and town pages come up there. We have an e-news letter that goes out once a week, and that goes to over 15,000 people in and around Montgomery County, people that visit, people that live here. And we regularly feature business and towns, and we're always looking for more content. So if there's anything happening in Hatfield, we are more than happy to help promote on our website. When it comes to our social media, that's my wheelhouse. I handle all of our social media. We like to spread the word using our very large social following. So last year, we saw 10 million video views on our, across our social channels, and this year, we're on pace to hit 14 million. We also have over 250,000 followers combined across all of our social platforms. That's primarily Facebook, Instagram, and TikTok, but we do have another, another couple floating around out there. We are one of the first CMOs in the area to create a TikTok channel. It's still growing, and we are testing ads and influencers on TikTok. I'm sure you've heard all about TikTok. It's the newest rage. And then here's an example of some of the social content that I help create for our social channels, highlighting some of the businesses in Montgomery County. I don't think it has sound, but this was Filomena Santucci's, which is right here in Hatfield. So we went, we tried some of their menu items. We created a really positive reel, encouraging people to come out and to visit and to see what they have to offer When it comes to our annual events, we have a couple key annual events that we like to promote. So we just finished up our Rev Run and our Travel and Golf Rally. Our Rev Run benefits the National Park in Valley Forge. All the money raised goes directly back into the park for things that visitors can use. We've put in wayfinding signs, we've put in bottle filling stations, all that kind of stuff. Every year, it grows a little bit, and runners come out from all over the country, even internationally to do that, so it's really cool. Our Travel and Golf Rally is just basically a big celebration of tourism, so we like to celebrate the fact that our tourism industry is thriving and share some of the statistics about how well the industry is doing in Montgomery County. We have tons of Motco meetups and business association meetings, so we do those in targeted areas about once a quarter for all of our members and all of our prospective members. So anybody who's interested in gaining some more knowledge or insight about what our company does, they're invited out. It's a big networking event. Everybody gets to know each other, and then we get to learn more about what the businesses are doing and how we can promote them. And last but not least, our annual luncheon is quickly approaching. That's in October. We have about 600 people come to our annual luncheon every year, so the more, the merrier. So save the date now, and if you want to come, let us know. And what everybody wants to hear about, America 250. I feel like I talk about it every day, even though it's still quite a while away. We have a very big year ahead of us coming. We have major events coming to Philadelphia and the surrounding areas. Some of those are the NCAA March Madness Tournament, PGA Tour at Aron Amane Golf Club, FIFA World Cup, and the MLB All-Star Game, as well as, obviously, the 250th birthday of our country, and the Valley Forge National Park will be celebrating their 50th birthday as well. So a lot going on. A lot of these do happen in Philly, but we see so much overflow into Montgomery County. So our hotels, our businesses, our restaurants, our things to do are going to see an explosion next year. We're a little worried about transportation, but I, as long as those people can get out here, we are very confident that they will be more than happy to spend their time and their money in Montgomery County, as Philly will be so crowded. In addition, we're also doing something called the Houses of Declaration, which is very exciting. So next July, we are getting businesses all across Montgomery County to participate in readings of the Declaration of Independence. So basically, this would happen like it would have back in 1776, where at bars, taverns, wherever people hang out, there are going to be readings of the Declaration, as it would have occurred back then. Hatfield is already in talks to become one of these destinations, so that's all being figured out, and we will be reading the Declaration of Independence here. Last but not least, we have to do a Freedom from Hunger plug. Since 2015, our organization has been raising money for Motco Anti-Hunger Network, which services about 70 soup kitchens in Montgomery County and feeds the food insecure in our county. So we have a yearly kitchen takeover. We take over a soup kitchen, and we feed the community that day. That happens in August. Our goal this year is to raise the monetary equivalent of 180,000 pounds of food, and lifetime to date, we've already donated more than half a million pounds. We worked last year with King of Prussia Mall, Workhouse Brewing, Blossom Cafe, and many more businesses for some additional donations, whether that was $1 for every coffee, $1 for every beer was then donated back. And this year, that, excuse me, this year, that list is growing, so we are always looking for more people that want to be involved. If you know of anybody or any businesses would like to participate, please let me know. I also left my business card with the guides that I passed around, so as always, if anybody has any questions, would like to pass along information, or wants to see how we can help, just reach out. I'm more than happy to connect you to the right person. Let me know if you have any questions.
We, we have a Hatfield 250 Committee, and so I'm not sure if the committee members, I'm, I'm part of it, but I'm not the head of it. I'm not sure if there's been any coordination with your organization, but I'll check and see, and of course, you know.
I actually heard from Frank today.
Yep.
And I talked to his wife just a second ago, so he is in contact with our Visitor Experience Team.
Great.
And I think they have a call set up to figure out when and where that declaration might be happening.
Perfect, perfect. All right, any questions or comments? Commissioners' residents. Next year's going to be huge, so you're going to be very, very busy.
Yes.
Yes.
Hopefully, we all are.
Yes, that's right. All right, well, thank you very much for coming out. Appreciate it. All right, we have another special item. I'm going to hand this over to Commissioner Lestrako. Why don't I just do that now?
Sure, thank you. President Zipfel.
Let's, let's make sure Carmina can hear us.
Carmina, can you hear us?
Carmina, can you, can you hear us?
Did you mute her? Did she mute herself?
I think she's muted.
She is muted. Says she's muted.
I think she muted. Carmina, you're still muted. Try now. Okay, we, we can hear you now, Carmina. Can you hear us? Carmina, can you hear us?
I don't know if they're in a bad area.
This is going well. All right. One second, Malachi.
Yeah, Malachi, we'll give it, give it a quick second. If not, we'll.
I'll still introduce her.
Do a quick intro.
I'll say who she is, and then.
You want to do that, and I'll text her to start talking.
Sure.
Yeah.
So Carmina Taylor is here on Zoom. She is the advisor for the Black Student Union at North Penn High School, and she has been in contact with us, so we're really happy to, for her to be here tonight and for her to bring our speaker, our guest speaker, tonight. Speaking is Malachi Nesbit.
Yes, ma'am.
And, oh, here she is. Okay. Ready for you, Carmina.
Just so you know, I'm trying to. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yep, you're on.
Erin? Okay, good. So, good evening, everyone. I apologize that I can't be there in person. I'm sun-soaked. I've been presenting all day today outside at a football camp, doing drug and alcohol profession for our youth, but I want to just share that at the moment, at our moment today, when we are sharing, when we should be sharing and learning from each other's cultural heritage, our traditional holidays, or holidays we want to commemorate, this is a perfect moment to be exposed to why Juneteenth matters to the African-American community. So I'm so pleased to have Malachi Nesbit from North Penn High School. He's a rising junior, and he is an active member of the Black Student Union, and he's an exceptional student ambassador for our Cultural Proficiency and Equity Program. So without further ado, Malachi, please come up to the podium. I need to see you.
I'm here, Ms. Carmina.
Can I see you, Malachi? Jen, let me know that he's there, then I'll get off.
He's here.
Could you guys hear me? All right, there. All right, thank you, Erin. I watched the recording. I want you to be, I was so moved by his words, and I just want him to take his time, speak your truth, and share why Juneteenth is important to you. I'm going to sign off. I hope you guys can see me. Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for this opportunity for Malachi. The best to you, Malachi.
Thank you, Ms. Carmina.
Oh, wait, wait. He's also a Hatfield resident. I should have said that. That makes it extra special. He is one of your own, and you guys should be proud. Thanks.
That's great. Thank you, Carmina.
Well, good evening, everyone. Like Ms. Carmina said, my name is Malachi Nesbit. I am an upcoming junior at North Penn High School. And today, I was asked to give you a, a statement or a speech on why Juneteenth is important to me and to the black people, my black community. So, good evening, everyone. To stay, today, I stand before you, not just to mark a holiday, but to lift, but to lift up a history, a legacy, a truth. Juneteenth is not just a date on the calendar. It is a heartbeat of hope echoing through generations. It marks the day, June 19th, 1865, when the final shackles of slavery were broken in Galveston, Texas, two years after the Emancipation Proclamation was signed, two years too long. Because freedom delayed is not freedom denied, but is, but it is a reminder that justice must never drag its feet. Maya Angelou once said, "You may not, you may not control all the events that happen to you, but you can decide not to be reduced by them." Juneteenth is that decision, the decision to rise, to celebrate, to remember, and to push forward. It is a symphony of resilience sung by the souls who survived chains, born by the backs that built this nation, lifted by the dreams that refused to die. It is Langston Hughes' Dreams Deferred, but on Juneteenth, that dream sings, maybe late, maybe cracked, but still rising, still real, and still ours. We celebrate Juneteenth because our history is sacred, because our joy is resistance, because our freedom is not finished. So let it, so let us honor it, not just with fireworks and flags, but truth, but with truth-telling, with justice chasing, and with the loud, proud knowledge that we are our ancestors' answered prayers. Juneteenth reminds us, we are still writing the story, and we will not stop until every voice is free to sing. Thank you.
Well said. Well said, Malachi. Thank you for coming out. We really appreciate it. Yeah, yeah, I was going to say, you don't, you're not getting off that easy. We like to take pictures here. Okay, yeah, but we take pictures, and then we put it up on the Facebook, on Facebook and everything else. How about all the pictures? Okay, two great presentations. We always like to have that. Spices up what sometimes is otherwise maybe not the most exciting meetings around. But speaking of, we're going to jump into our committee reports, so some of the nuts and bolts of what we do. Planning and Zoning Committee, Vice President Rogers.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, moving right along. Public Works Committee.
Mr. President, just a quick update, public works related. Our road program for 2025, two aspects to it, the ramps, the accessible ramps and the paving of the roads. The ramps have been completed, mostly in the Stewart Drive and Vice President Rogers' Ward. Stewart Drive in Concord, a large neighborhood over there, that we upgraded all the ramps this year in anticipation of paving then next year. Thanks to Vice President Rogers for coordinating and facilitating that. We knew these improvements for years now, and we're taking it one step at a time, allowing utilities to get in throughout this year to fix a lot of the service lines that have caused some sinking over the years. So that piece is done, and then the paving should begin at some point in the next few weeks. And the most visible and most often-used road that will be paved is Cow Path Road. And for any of us or people in the audience that have driven Cow Path Road lately, it is pretty abundantly clear that it is needed. So we're in partnership with the Hatfield Borough on that project. All the work under the road has been completed. There's, there's new storm sewers, there's new sanitary sewers, and now we'll pave the road and have a whole new, nice, cleaned-up corridor in the next few weeks. And I know Ray in the audience who lives on Cow Path, he, he's not concerned with any of the speeding, right, Ray, after the paving? That's usually what we hear after where they pave, then. As long as he behaves, we'll be okay. But a big improvement, one longer-waited, too, for Cow Path Road, so that's, that is happening shortly.
Okay, all right, good updates. We're going to move to Parks and Recreation Committee. Commissioner Lestrako.
Thank you, President Zipfel. A lot of things are happening this summer, so I'm going to start with our programs, our exercise programs, Get Fit classes. That began, or that will begin this Saturday, no, I'm sorry, last Saturday, June 21st, it began. So those, that international yoga class will be 7:00 PM at Hatfield Township Arboretum, and I think it, it looks like it's ever going to, no, I'm sorry, that's, that's not happening for the, that's just one event. Sorry about that. So one event, the other event for exercise will be this full summer, and that's Aqua Zumba, June 23rd to August 18th. No class July 7th or August 4th, and that's 7:00 to 8:00 PM. And that will be at the Hatfield Aquatic Center, $70 per person, and that's Mondays. Also, we have spring and summer pickleball, and that runs until October 31st. If you're interested, at the community park for pickleball, Fridays through, I'm sorry, Mondays through Fridays, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And residents are $25 for pickleball, and non-residents $40. And we have Music Fest, the Music Feast Summer Concerts, June 30th, that's this Monday, is that right? Yes. The Wonton, the Wonton Supes, it will be the band playing that night. Then the next, the next Music Feast will be July 14th, July 28th, August 11th, and August 25th. So please look for those on our website. Those are all Mondays, and that's 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at School Road Park. There will be a food for sale by the Scouts, so bring some money for that. Parks and Rec, our celebration will be this month, so, sorry, next month. That will be Friday, July 18th, at School Road Park, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and there will be a movie at 8:30. The activities will include balloon animals, face painting, foam and bubble party, Ninja Rock climb and slide, inflatable axe throwing, that's interesting, Parks and Rec giveaways, and a special guest will be the Hatfield Police Department, the Colmar Fire Company, and more. And the feature film that night will be Avengers. There will also be two food trucks with barbecue and dough and company. And some other movies in the park, as we said, Avengers, that will also, that will be July 18th, and then Madagascar will be happening Friday, August 15th, also 8:00 PM at School Road Park. And there'll be some other activities from 6:30 to 7:30, which is August 15th. That will be some more activities for kids and families. Thank you very much.
Okay.
President Zipfel, back to you.
Lot going on. That's really good stuff. We're going to jump right to Public Safety Committee. Commissioner Partha.
Thank you, Mr. President. So on May 23rd, Hatfield officers assisted with a fillet cop car with food event at Hatfield Giant. On May 23rd, our officers participated in a CB classes event at Oak Park School. On June 23rd, Hatfield officers were on hand at the North Penn Pal Night Out, Night Event at North Penn High School. On June 14th, Hatfield officers greeted people at the Juneteenth Event at Plains Menonite Church. On June 21, Hatfield officers took part in the Cars for a Christ Event at the Hadelberg Church. On June 23rd, Hatfield officers helped out the North Penn Pal at the, at their mini-golf event at Fredius Park. Thank you.
Okay, only one committee left. Commissioner Andrus, Finance Committee.
Thank you very much. Financial report. So this is not only a finance update, but also a public safety update. Beginning the school year 2425, North Penn School District partnered with local police departments to install bus stop armed cameras to capture vehicles that pass when a school bus stops and the arm is extended. The fine is $300 per citation. Of the $300, $250 goes to the school district, $25 to the police department, and $25 to Penda for grant programs. An example of this is of the revenue and violations of safety protocol. In one month of March, cameras recorded 840 violations within the district, of which 657 of those were approved and cited. So you've just got to be careful with the school buses. I know it's summertime, but come fall, they'll be back on the road again. The township portion was $15,000 for the school year. Although the additional revenue is a small bonus, we only want to see safer environment for the children riding the buses. Number of violations is alarming, hoping, and hopefully, this program will help reduce the recklessness as the school buses drive along the area. Thank you.
Okay, it's an important announcement, for sure. All right, we have three action items tonight. First is ordinance number 708, with regard to an update speed limit and truck restrictions. Why don't we take a motion, and then we'll get into the conversation. Is there such a motion for ordinance 7?
That's a hearing I should.
Oh.
Let me establish the hearing, so.
Got it. So then we need a motion for, to enter into a hearing.
That's correct.
All right, is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Vice President Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Partha. All in favor of moving into a hearing with regard to ordinance 708, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done, we're approved, and we are now in a meeting, and our solicitor will handle it from here.
Thank you. At this time, I will mark the filing exhibits into the record. The letter to the reporter is T1, the proof publication is T2, the proposed ordinance is T3, the ordinance is T4, and the legal notice is T5. I'll move them into the record at this time and turn it over to the manager to give some context to this ordinance. Erin? Thank you, Mr. Iainosi. Just some visuals for all of us to understand exactly the changes that are taking place in the field. These are both state roads, so this is really just to reflect what is happening in the field and to update ordinances so they're accurate with some of the recent changes that have been made. So this is Bethland Pike Route 309, Pendot recently, and, and actually, Chief Tierney deserves a lot of credit. He, he has, he has advocated for changes along this corridor for years. He has met with Representative Malagary dozens of times. We've been at the Pendot offices. Scott Hutt has, has also been part of the team, trying to create a safer corridor in this part of Hatfield. I think everyone's aware of, of some of the concerns. There's been several accidents, there's been several fatalities, more than two last year alone. So there's been some improvements that have already been made, that you cannot make a left anymore onto Bergy Road from 309, which was, of all of our Facebook posts we've ever made, that one generated over 200,000 views and comments. That was, that was a lightning rod. I guess a lot of people used it, and other people thought it was, it was a great idea. But also, in addition to those recent updates...
But also in addition to those recent updates, the speed limit for this quarter has dropped to 45, which it was prior 50. Is that right, Chief? So 55, 50 to 45, and we know signs don't necessarily slow everyone down, but it is an adjustment that hopefully will make some safety improvements. There are many other improvements that are, that are being examined for that corridor. Most of them are attached to the Phase 3, the Connector Road, which is currently being designed. We had a meeting with Pendot not too long ago, and there's some more additional improvements that will make that corridor even safer. So this is just one step of many that hopefully will make this stretch safer for our residents and visitors. Commissioners, any questions before I jump to the other one? I think this one speaks for itself. The other one is on Cow Path Road, from the borough line to Line Street, speed was reduced to 40 miles per hour, previously at 45. One question from the audience earlier, Chief, do we know if Pendot plans on adjusting the speed on the other side of the borough to the Franconia border?
I have absolutely no, no information on that.
Hasn't come up yet. So this stretch has already been changed, signs are out there, this will then, our ordinance will match the field. And if requested, we can certainly work with Pendot to get the other section adjusted. I think a lot of that is still, the Phase 2 of the Connector Road is set to open at some point this summer, early fall. So maybe in conjunction with that is a good time to look at that corridor. But these are the two amendments in the ordinance regarding the speed limit. Then also a truck restriction, which, again, credit to Chief Tierney and his traffic safety team officer Peck. This came up from several requests from residents for us to look at this corridor because some heavy trucks were using these roads, making it unsafe to cross certain bridges, also beating up our infrastructure. And asked if we could look at this along with our engineer to restrict three axles or greater. So the additional signage in the update to the ordinance will restrict any trucks that have three axles or more from using the corridor you see outlined in yellow, which is lying Lexington Road and Treewick Town Road. So improvements that have been received very well from our residents, based on a lot of the feedback we have heard. And Chief's team has done a great job of making our community safer.
So that would stop some of the construction vehicles? I won't be specific.
It would.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Yep, they'll have to find another route.
Yeah.
And I believe we are enforcing this aggressively, Chief.
We are indeed, and we get many comments from neighbors on the streets saying they see a difference immediately.
It's good. They fly through there.
Thank you, Aaron. At this time, are there any other questions from the board on this ordinance? Any questions from the public on this ordinance at this time? All right, one at a time, please come forward to the podium, state your name, and state whether you're a resident of Hatfield Township.
Yeah, my name is John Sperling. Yes, I'm a resident of Hatfield Township. I live out on Welsh Road. And that's my question, for like three quarters of a mile or so, the speed limit is 45. It's 35 on the other side of Hatfield Township. Can we get that lowered too? I mean, that's a really, there's hills all over, there's always deer get hit out there.
It's certainly something we can take a look at.
On Welsh Road, yeah, so again, another Pendot road, so they're the ultimate decision maker, but we can request Pendot to review the corridor and make a change if they feel like it's warranted, for sure.
And that's one thing to understand, we're on top of these things all the time. Like Aaron said, we speak to Pendot, we make requests, and not everything is granted, but we're always on it, so understand that.
It's kind of silly to have that half mile or three quarters of a mile higher speed limit when you can't do, you really shouldn't be doing that anyway.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? Ma'am, please come forward and state your name and whether you're a resident of Hatfield Township.
I'm Joan Di Maria, and I am a resident of Hatfield Township. With the truck restriction, would you consider adding Cow Path, or, I'm sorry, or Villa Road to that for the large trucks? Just in case any of you missed the show last week, there was a tractor trailer that was coming down Cow Pa, or Villa, I'm sorry, trying to make, maneuver through the S curve, and it held up until people stopped and gave him room to kind of get through the curve. There's also the bridge that's kind of small too. So I just wanted to ask if you would give that some consideration to add to the roads for truck restrictions.
That is another state road, something that we can consider. And at the same token, I understand the problem, but as we narrow down how many, where trucks can actually go, we're gonna have nowhere to go east and west within Hatfield Township.
True.
So that's something to keep in mind as well.
Okay, thank you.
But Joan, we can do a study and we can coordinate with Pendot, and there is a historic bridge owner, Villa, that I know Pendot would be interested in keeping protected from some heavy trucks. But like Chief said, a lot of the trucks are usually pointed towards state roads, to use state roads rather than township roads. So that would be tricky, but we'll absolutely have the conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sure. Are there any other questions at this time, sir? Please come forward and state your name and whether you're a resident of Hatfield Township.
Charles Thompson, I'm Hatfield Township. In regards to the three axle on Township Line Road and the other one over there, does that consider motorhomes as well? Because a lot of my motorhome has three axles. If you go out towards Tyminson Avenue by Detwaller Road, there's no three axle. That includes motorhomes. Does that include motorhome for that?
That's not what we're looking for on our roads. We're looking for.
But I'm just saying, does that, will that include?
No, you're not gonna have any problem, and if you do, if anything were to happen, please give us a call because our intent is huge trucks are destroying the road. Motorhome is not destroying the road.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, proceed back into the public meeting, turn it over to the President. This ordinance is in a position to entertain for a motion for adoption. Mr. President.
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of ordinance 708, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. All right, next is a motion for approval with regard to Boyle Construction. It's an extension of the management contract for the police station. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Vice President Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lestracko. Aaron, do you want to walk us through this one?
Sure, thanks, Mr. President. Not an unexpected agenda item. We initially had signed, the commissioners had signed an agreement with Boyle Construction for a 12-month term when their services were first secured. It was actually back in 2023, believe it or not. But then the contract itself started in 2024. It's set to expire. They're asking to, for the board to consider a three-month extension, which they believe will take us to a point what they call the station substantially complete. So not entirely complete, but enough to where we probably, we won't need management services anymore. So this would be allowing Boyle to continue for three more months. It is an additional cost of $150,000 total. And keep in mind, with that additional cost, we are still, at this point, set to complete the project under budget, even with that additional cost. So there was a contingency set up for a timeline like this. There's a lot of scenarios and a lot of delays that are well outside of the control of really anybody when it comes to the construction. So we are on track to complete substantially this fall. We'll talk more about the move, but we believe that'll be over the winter, and then we'll have a lot to talk about in the spring with our community. But this will allow us to have our manager overseeing the construction for three additional months, this action item. And the commissioners were there earlier tonight for a tour, and we've seen the progress, and they've done a great job, and we could not have done this project without them, that's for sure.
Yeah, it's great progress to see it from basically, you know, a hole in the ground to where it is now. And it's gonna, each time we stop over and Chief gives us just a quick view, it's just, it's amazing to see the progress that takes place, you know, month after month, so.
We do look forward to sharing the building with everybody too, and having everybody through, and like Aaron said, we'll talk about that later. But I think everybody who comes through is going to be deeply impressed. It's your building as much as it is ours, and we look forward to sharing it with you.
Right. Chief, I did hear that Dean volunteered to be the first person in the jail cell.
He's not coming anywhere near the film. All right, any, oh, sorry, yes.
So regarding the $150 increasing, like, you know, what is the cost is increasing, like, the $150 we're increasing, right, for the three month?
Correct.
What is the breakdown for $150?
The breakdown, it's $50,000 per month for the construction management services. So the $150 would be in total for the three-month extension.
All right, any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. All right, our third item, which is Resolution 25-10, is there a motion for approval of the North Penn Health Hospital and Education Authority financing project?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Lestracko.
Second.
Second by Vice President Rogers. Aaron, I think you've got this one as well.
Sure, thanks, Mr. President. As some of the commissioners know that have been on the board for years, Hatfield Township has two what they call financing authorities. We have one called the IDA, the Industrial Development Authority, and we have one called the one you see before you, North Penn Health Hospital and Education Authorities. The state allows levels of government to have these financing authorities to encourage the creation of jobs, the creation of manufacturing. What it allows the borrower is to qualify for a loan that is note, is tax-free in a lower interest than you would get on the market rate. In addition, if you go through these authorities, then that transaction generates a fee. And in this case, it's a $7,500 fee, which then goes back to the authority, and the authority is made up of all volunteers that are appointed by the commissioners, all Hatfield residents. And those residents then decide how to reinvest that money back into the community. So as an example, the commissioners are well aware of this, but our mural down the street was paid for through these fees. Frick's Trail, not entirely, but partially was paid through some of these fees. The original police station, some of the improvements over there were paid through these fees. So what happens, and in this case specifically, the, it's not Hatfield, it's regional base. So the Horsham Quaker School approached the North Penn Health Hospital Education Authority. They're gonna be financing $4.8 million. It's important to note that none of this money is taxpayer-funded. None of this is coming from the township. It's through a bank, and then the authority acts as a conduit, allowing them to get some of the benefits. So this in particular is a $4.8 million loan, which allows the Quaker Horsham School to build a 13,000 square foot building with eight classrooms, 10 offices, and a sensory gym. So the authority is not necessarily involved or has anything to do with the specifics of the project. The project qualifies, in this case, because it's a nonprofit organization. There are other ways to qualify, but it's been limited significantly by the state over the years. Both authorities have the ability to lend $10 million. Back in the 80s and 90s in Hatfield, both authorities, every year, were lending $10 million. So the fee that was generated was significant. Whereas now, because of the state amendments, we don't, we've only seen a handful of these over the last five years, but we've seen them. Elm Terrace is a local example that was funded through one of these financing authorities. So the commissioners, by state law, ultimately just have to approve a resolution approving the transaction. But again, no, zero liability to Hatfield Township. Not one dollar or cent of taxpayer money is involved. The bank is, it's still, the bank is the lender. The authority overseen by these volunteer residents are involved in the transaction, and then at some point, that fee gets reinvested into the community. So tonight is simply a resolution to approve, which then goes into their package.
These, when these financing projects come through, they're always very good and well worth it, so just from a historical perspective. All right, any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, then I'll call the question. All in favor of Resolution 25-10, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. All right, Township Staff Report, we actually have a resolution. Aaron, I'm not sure if you want me to take the motion, or do you want to talk about it first?
Whatever you prefer.
Well, why don't I just take, the chair will make a motion for approval of Resolution 25-11, which is a support for SEPTA funding. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by, from Commissioner Partha. All right, now, Aaron?
Sure, thanks, thanks, Mr. President. We don't often advocate in this room for funding or projects outside of the township, but there's, this one's worthwhile. So currently, SEPTA is facing a $200 million budget deficit. And if no additional funding is provided, the proposed plan is to eliminate 50 bus routes, five regional rail lines, and ending service at 9:00 PM on some of the lines. So the governor and the current budget proposal is showing a $280 million increase that would cover that gap. It has passed the House, has not yet passed the Senate. We're involved in the Transportation Partnership Group, who's been here, who's doing some bike studies for Hatfield, and they, they're an advocacy group for multi-transportation modes. And they asked the membership towns, which we are one of them, to consider passing this resolution that will be sent then to Senator Colette. I know Senator Colette specifically is in support of this. She was at the Lansdale Train Station last week talking about this funding. It's important to her. And Hatfield Township specifically, we have three SEPTA stations, Colmar, Fortuna, and Link Belt. And I know a lot of our residents here in Hatfield use the public transportation for work, for enjoyment, for a lot of reasons. It's important to our local economy, it's important to the success of our community. So this is simply a resolution saying that we believe funding our public transportation is important to the Hatfield community. And if the board would, if the board agrees with a statement like that, we will send the resolution over to Senator's office and hopefully give her a little more momentum and support to get this legislation through.
All right, questions or comments? The resolution doesn't articulate a particular amount. It just says that we're supporting funding.
Correct.
For SEPTA.
So we're not funding it, we're just supporting it?
We are asking the state to fund the public transportation properly. Not $1 would be coming from Hatfield Township, other than through the state revenue.
Any other questions, comments? No? Hearing none?
Yeah, my only point would be, at some point, SEPTA needs to start managing, it's every year, right?
It's.
It's been going on for years and years and years and years.
Yep.
So, okay.
It's a fair comment. It's such a critical part for everyone, right? It becomes one of these, we can't live without it type scenarios, right? So, all right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of Resolution 25-11, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. All right, Solicitor's Report, Mr. Solicitor.
Nothing further to report tonight.
Okay, citizens' comments, any citizens' comments? I think Dean's gonna get you back. I think Dean's gonna get, I looked at Aaron and I said, I think Dean's gonna get you back.
So I was just giving an update on the truck. I don't know if you've been following Facebook or not. Our truck should be completed by the middle of this month. We have our crew, the Truck Committee going out to Wisconsin on the 13th and 14th. So once that, they go, they approve what's there, and then it goes from Wisconsin to Pittsburgh, and from Pittsburgh into Ohio. Ohio is where all our tools will go and get mounted. So we'll pay for that separately. That's a separate item that we pay for. So we're hoping, it's probably gonna be a month process just to mount everything the way we want to mount it. So we're hoping by, maybe towards the end of August, it'd be back in Hatfield. So it's just an update on what we're doing.
Completion in August, then?
Yeah, that's what we're shooting for.
That'd be great.
Looking forward to a ride.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You bring it to a meeting, Dean?
Yeah, once it goes into service, we have to do training, you know, peers will come out, monitor all the stuff, they do what we do.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. All right, any other citizens' comments? All right, well then, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Vice President Rogers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lestracko. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Thanks for coming out, folks.